Good evening and welcome to the May 27, 2020 meeting in the Milton Select Board. Our first order of business is to go into executive session for two items. And so I will make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30a, Section 21, Subpart A, Subpart 1, Purpose 1, to discuss an open meeting law complaint made by Sister Cindy Christensen against the Select Board and the Select Board's response to that complaint, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically with the Southeastern Public Employee Association, the discussion of which an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position. And we will return to open session thereafter. Do I have a second?
Second.
If he's been made in second, this will be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Collins. Yes. Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Wells, yes. So we're going to go into executive session for those. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Item four, item five, rather, is public comment. So we will conduct public comment the same way we have since we started these remote meetings back in March. That is as follows. We will open up all the mics to all of the participants, and anyone wishing to participate in public comment should state their name. If they are participating by telephone number, they should state the last four digits of their phone number, so we can identify them for the purpose of giving them the opportunity to speak. And then we will close up the lines, so we don't get too much feedback or noise, and we'll allow, we'll go down the list and allow each person to participate in public comments. So again, we're going to open up the microphones. If you wish to participate in public comments, state your name. If you're participating by phone, state the last four digits of your telephone number, and then we will close all the mics and open up each person's mic to give them the opportunity to participate. So hopefully that's clear. Hillary, could you open up all the mics? All right. And just let me know when everybody's, everybody's open.
Yes, we are open now.
All right. Does anyone wish to participate in public comment? Please state your name. If you're on the phone, state the last four digits of your telephone number. One more time, anyone wishing to, wishing to participate in public comments, state your name. If you're participating by phone, the last four digits of your telephone number. All right, here are none. We will move on. Hillary, if you could mute all the lines except for the members of the board and, and Mr. Dennehy and Caroline Cincella, who has joined us and will give us, we'll go to item six, which is the COVID-19 update, and Caroline, I believe, is available to give us an update. So, Hillary, if you could mute everyone except for the board members, Mr. Dennehy and Caroline Cincella. And it looks like that has happened. So Caroline, we appreciate you joining us this evening, and if you want to go ahead and give us your update, that would be very much appreciated.
Thank you, Chair Zulus and Select Board members. Today Milton has a total of 294 residents who have tested positive for COVID-19 to date. The positive cases have decreased significantly over the last week and a half, and today we had actually no positive cases, so that's great news. We're also seeing more people testing to find out if they were exposed to the virus in the past and have developed antibodies. Tests for the positive IgG antibodies have now entered our workflow, and we're reaching out to residents to find out if these residents have had any symptoms. So if you test for the antibodies, it's considered a probable case, and you will be asked to isolate for 10 days unless you perform a second test. It's a nasal swab, which is the gold standard test. And if the nasal swab is negative, then you don't have to isolate for the 10 days. So I do recommend if you are considering taking the antibody test, and it's a blood test, that you also do the PCR test at the same time, unless you want to call from us and we're going to ask you to isolate. So best to do the two tests at once. And the state is watching the daily numbers from the Dashboard of Public Health Indicators to see, you know, if the numbers are going up or where they're trending, and that will inform the decisions about the four phases of opening the Commonwealth. So we're currently in phase one, and we'll be watching those numbers and the data closely to find out where we're going and what our roadmap is ahead. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Questions or comments from the members for Caroline? Mr. Wells.
Just one question for Caroline. One of the things that the governor talks about is, and I've talked about this before with Mr. Dennehy, I may have actually mentioned in the public meetings, is that some of the spikes that you see come from congregations that come where either someone, they're all in a church, or they go to a beach. I think there was one pool party which led to 100 cases. Are we having any conversations at all with DCR? And not that these people are from Milton, but the Blue Hills is still growing every day. They've opened up all the parking lots now, and I just see, as we all see through town, people are just moving and moving and moving to go out. Have we had any conversations with them at all about this? And I don't mean from us reaching out. Are they touching base with us at all, Caroline or Michael, either, at all?
Yeah. Craig Cashman, who's the new Chief of Staff for DCR Commissioner Montgomery, has been reaching out. He touched the wall last week to talk about opening up the parking lots and if the town had any reservation or problems with that. I followed up with Chief King, and as, as you would know, when parking lots are closed in and around the Blue Hills and Houghton's Pond, it actually puts pressure on the Adrian-Eileen Blue Hill neighborhood. It has, it actually has a reverse impact on the town. So the chief didn't see any problem with relieving that, and they did mention, and I think I mentioned to this board, either through an email or at one of our last meetings, that they plan on opening, or they, they had talked about opening Houghton's Pond on June 13th. But they have, they have been bouncing stuff off us to see what effect it would have on the town and if we had any, any concerns or questions.
I just see it for this summer. Kind of, it's going to be a natural gathering point. It already is, especially on weekends. It's just, it's twice what it normally is. And correct, going back to the issue on the Adrian-Eileen Silverbrook, it's even gone into like Melinda Forest Island around Milk Pond there at the end of Hillside Street. That's all. That was just my main concern, but I just want to make sure they're being proactive with us on this. As they are with the beaches, this has almost been kind of forgotten. You hear so much dialogue from Quincy and Boston about Carson, Malibu, Quincy Shore Drive, Nantucket Beach and how, and we're getting double the numbers they are, and you just never hear it. So I'm just hoping that they're being open, discussing this with you, because they are, they have the appearance of, you know, they could spark a flare up with some of these other places. But thank you for that. And thanks, Caroline. I was happy to see you on that Walk Monday. It looked like it was well deserved.
Thanks, Richard.
Other comments or questions for Caroline? Caroline, can I just ask? Could I ask? You'd mentioned that there was some work on a possibility of some more robust reporting, reporting of the COVID-19 numbers with Alan Bishop. Is it still in play?
Yes, actually, we were listening to a webinar today about pivot tables, and Alan Bishop was on that webinar, and he is going to put all the information together. So March 1st was the first positive case in Milton. We're going to do a three-month data display between March 1st and June 1st, and that's coming out probably on June, the week of June 1st. And he's putting together all the data of, you know, the age of the people in Milton who tested positive for COVID, age and race, and probably how many cases we're having each month. And we do have about 37 probable cases. I was talking about the antibodies, but we have had 37 positive cases of, I can't say positive, we have 37 probable cases, and those are the people that are testing for the antibodies. But he's going to get all that data together, and actually, we're going to ask the Milton Times to see if they can put that in the paper to show everybody the data that we've collected, and he's able to pull together, which is great.
And certainly, certainly, we don't want to forget about our friends at the Patriot Ledger who are on the line as well, so.
Patriot Ledger.
Caroline, one other thing, oh, will that include some numbers on recovered cases at all, or is that something that we can?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Well, and most people, most people have recovered.
Okay.
Which is, which is really great news, but I'm sorry to say that some, some members have passed away, some residents, they've passed away. I know of at least 15 from our data so far, but there may be more than that by the time June 1st hits. So, yes, we have had residents pass.
Yeah. In your absence, we, you had reported that last week, that number of 15, and, but I know there is some interest in the number of recovered cases, so if we can have that as part of that report, that would be helpful.
That will be in the report. Yes, and it's interesting to see the ages, too, of where this is, how many, how many people and what age groups they're falling into that are testing positive.
All right, well, thank you, thank you again, Caroline. Anything else from the members? Thanks so much, Caroline. Much appreciated, and as always, if there's anything that you need or any, anything that we can do to help, just let us know.
Thank you so much. Appreciate, appreciate your support.
All right. Without objection, I'd like to go to item 6C, which is the update on the virtual town meeting, because we have two guests for that item. Moderator Hisse and the Chair of our Virtual Town Meeting Advisory Committee, Frank Schroth, is, that's quite a title, Frank, that you have. So, so I guess I will turn it over to, to Mr. Hisse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our committee is proceeding apace under the assumption that we'll be able to have authorization to a town meeting. I think some of you may know that the House did pass the legislation with amendments that the Senate had passed, now it has to go to a reconciliation committee. I've been in touch with Representative Driscoll, and he was, he's confident that'll get resolved. I don't know how long that takes, and it goes to the governor, and then we have our enabling legislation. So with that, our committee is proceeding as if that will occur, and we'll be able to execute the virtual, virtual town meeting on June 15. So I prepared an email that'll go out tomorrow to all of the members. It'll talk about how to register, the importance of getting a Zoom account. We're scheduling training starting next week by precinct, and talking about just the importance of doing those things before the virtual town meeting happens, so that we don't end up with a bunch of people jammed up at 7:29 on Monday the 15th with issues. Now, we'll have help desk and some other things, some people standing by from the library, numbers for people to call in case there's last-minute issues, but we're really trying to emphasize to the, the members, please help us prepare in advance, so this can go smoothly that night. We've got about 15 members for whom we have no email address, and I think, as you know, that's the user ID under the Zoom system that we've selected. So one of our committee members, Hillary Rickwaite, is trying to track down phone numbers, because some of those members in the clerk's office, we don't have phone numbers as well, hard to believe. So even though we've sent an email to everyone we have, we've sent a letter last week in writing to request their participation in a survey. I'll let Frank comment on that. There's still a few people who are, from whom we don't have a good contact information, so we're going to do all we can to track them down, and if need be, help those 15 folks get registered, or at least give us an email so they can self-register. One item just for the Select Board, and I think Kevin Freitag, Town Counsel, you know, we often have sidebars at our in-person town meeting. I think I sent a note to, to you, Chair Zulus. I encourage you to consult among yourselves. How would you like to do that the night of town meeting? Do you want to, for example, I've talked to the school committee, they're going to do a group chat. Others, you may have a, you may want to do a FaceTime session. You may want to have a separate Zoom session, maybe on a different device. I'll leave it up to you, but I'd encourage you to think through how you'd like to communicate privately amongst yourselves, you know, when questions come from the members that require a consult.
Bob, when do you need an answer on that from us?
I think by our planning meeting on Friday morning, the 12th, just so I understand.
Okay, okay. So, all right, so it's not, that's not something we need to decide tonight?
No.
Okay.
And if you could just consider being able to invite me into it, so I can, if you want to add me to that consult, as we somewhat do, I've got multiple devices, text, FaceTime, you know, whatever you like, I can accommodate. And I'll be doing the same thing with Kevin, you know, I can exchange cells and have a sidebar conversation that way, off mic, off camera. Frank, I thought you might want to talk about the survey results and our dry run last week. You're on mute, by the way.
Frank, you're on mute. Sorry about that. So the clerk, Susan Galvin, sent out a letter last week to reinforce the notification that this was going to be happening and to conduct a survey where we would be able to understand what the technology issues might exist among the membership, right? So at the, the email that went out got about 100 responses, the letter that went out got about an additional 75. We have 174 responses to date. Of those 174 out of the 279, about 97% have laptops or computers with audio and video capabilities, and approximately 80% would rate themselves as a four or a five, with five the highest in terms of their comfort with video conferencing technology. Last week, we did a dry run with approximately eight town meeting members, and in my opinion, it went very well. There were several natural questions that came up in the course of the, of the session, but they were all easily resolved, and I think people found the, the system in general and the process in general to be fairly simple and fairly straightforward. So I'm relatively confident, actually more than relative, I'm pretty confident this can work, and that it really, that we've done, I believe this committee's done about the best it can do in the time that it had. It's now up to the membership. I want to echo what Bob said. A letter's going to go out, and we just strongly encourage town meeting members to make sure they have Zoom installed, they have the account credentials for the registration to town meeting, and that they have participated in the training to offset any questions they might have regarding how this process will work, and things like how to make a motion, how to second a motion, how to register a point of order, it's typical town meeting processes. And I think if all, if, if they do, this can go smoothly, with the understanding that, you know, it's not a town meeting, but it will, it will suffice. The only other thing I'd like to add is with regard to Bob's comment about how the Select Board and others might participate in sidebar conversations, I would just, my personal advice is against using Zoom or a second Zoom session. I'm worried people are going to get lost and confused if they've got multiple Zoom sessions running, they may not remember where they are. So that's just advice, you know, you're free to use whatever you want. What's your advice, Frank, on what to use? Well, you know, honestly, Mike, I'm not sure. I think having some type of open voice channel would probably be the best bet. The other thing I, and I honestly, I see it as an issue, but I don't have a solution for you. There are going to be, there are occasions during town meeting when the groups that need to sidebar are somewhat fluid in their composition. So if there's an amendment, for example, that warrant committee is going to be asked to make a recommendation on that, well, that's a sort of a closed group, a contained group, if you will. But there are occasions when the Chair of the Warrant Committee may need to consult with the moderator and/or Town Counsel and/or the Chair of the Select Board, or the Select Board itself. If there were some common denominator there, it would probably be a good idea. But I don't have a, I'm afraid I don't have a firm recommendation on that. Questions or comments, Melinda?
Frank, when you say common denominator, are you talking about a person functioning as a common denominator, or the technology, or both?
No, I, I was referring to the technology. So that if the Chair of the Select Board is conferring with the Select Board on an amendment and then needs to bring in the Chair of the Warrant Committee, that the Warrant Committee and the Select Board are using the same technology, so that the Select Board Chair doesn't have a chat system with one group and a open voice channel on, I don't know what, with another group.
What's an open voice channel?
Well, Skype would be an example. Actually, Zoom can be an example, right? Where you, you can create a conference call and you just leave it open.
That you just leave it open, yeah.
Correct. And then when something comes up, then people can be there and discuss the issue.
For example, you could use FreeConferenceCall.com. Costs nothing to register, and you could open up a, a line for the entire town meeting amongst the Select Board if you wanted.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Before, Richard, I think actually Mr. Freitag had.
Go ahead, go ahead, let Kevin go first. So I just want to ask that question before he made his, but go ahead.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Richard.
No, so I'm just thinking out loud, I'm thinking about, you know, we were all together on Monday for the cemetery. It'd only be, what, the six of us plus, would we need Amy and Kevin as well? So what are we talking, like, it would be under 10. Could we not go somewhere, just our board? Because what Frank's describing right now is multiple devices throughout the whole town meeting. I mean, we could do it, but it's, I think it's a little more, perhaps, I'm just, you know, loud, just, you know. We could easily confer for something that we've never tried before. That's, I'm just thinking a lot, but that's my thought, just, go ahead, Kevin.
Richard, you broke up a little bit. Do you want to just give us the thought again, because we didn't, I don't think we got the whole thing.
So my thought is, just going back to Monday.
Right.
You know, what if just the 10 of us went to the Council on Aging, and we, we stayed there, and we watched it on Zoom on TV, and, oh, God, this dog. We watched it on TV and were able to confer while maintaining the guidelines, just as the governor does. You know, the governor and the mayor go out each day and speak, they, he's got 10 people with him. I'm not saying we have to decide today, but it would definitely be far more effective for us, given one platform we're going to be on versus having to use two platforms. But I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm just throwing it out there, we don't have to decide on it now, but it is getting warmer each day, and it could work.
Kevin Freitag, did you have something that you want to offer?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I was just going to offer that my firm has its own private conference system, which we could set up to accommodate however many individuals we wanted to have call in and participate in a secure conference line, which we could leave open for all of town meeting, and then the Select Board could have that at their advantage, you know, at their, they'd have the opportunity to dial into that if there was a question that needed to be discussed between the members of the board, or Town Counsel, or the moderator, or the Warrant Committee Chair needed to speak. I'm certainly happy to do that and offer those services.
That, that may be one, one helpful platform that we could use among the many that we need, sounds like we need. Other comments, questions from the members, Ms. Collins?
I appreciate Kevin's offer, although I think we should consider Richard's idea. I hadn't thought of that, but since it is a group that's under 10, I think what Richard suggested is worth taking another look at, and, not another, but take a look at, and the COA might be a good option for us, especially that large, I forget what they call it, but the large room, not the, not the, well, we could really use both of them, but the one that has the tables set up, the smaller room of the two large rooms, I think that might be an option.
Just a thought, for those of you who are town meeting members or ex officio, you'll, you'll still need to be able to dial into Zoom. So think about echoes and multiple mics in one room.
Right.
And all that.
Okay. And even if we did that, you know, we would still need a line for the Select Board, Warrant Committee, Moderator, Town Counsel, for that, you know, grouping, right? So, so that, that, that secure line could be used for that, I suppose, but, you know, leave it to you all to figure that out.
As an example, myself and the, the co-hosts, of whom we'll have three helping with the meeting, we're all going to be in the blue conference room at Town Hall spaced out so that we can manage the meeting effectively, you know, with sign language and hand signals and effective modern communication.
Passing notes to one another.
Yes, right.
Other comments or questions from the members?
Just a quick question to Kevin Freitag. If we used, I'm familiar with secure lines, if we used the secure line and we conferred amongst ourselves, the Chair would then have the ability to have the moderator or the Chair of the Warrant Committee dial in as well? Would we give them that privilege?
Yes, I would circulate in advance at a meeting, one, if not maybe more, but certainly one conference line that would just be, we wouldn't even have to all be on it for the whole meeting. It would just be available so that if there was a need to have a discussion between, for instance, Town Counsel and the Select Board, everyone could just call in to my office in the conference line and have that call. If we wanted the town moderator to be on that call as well, then he would have that number as well and could call in and, and join the call or whomever else. But that number would only be provided to individuals that we would want to be part of a communication with Town Counsel or the Select Board. So it would be closed, it would not be open to everyone.
Other comments or questions? Katie?
Well, to, to Bob's point about the echoes and multiple people in a room, you know, if we were to use the larger room that we generally meet in over at the COA, rather than the smaller room at the tables, we could have people at different corners of the room, and then there's still an ability to confer, but you're probably far enough away from each other that we may not have that issue with echoes, but I think that's worth thinking about.
Melinda? You could also use earbuds and/or headset to avoid echo issue. Just a second, Melinda had something, and then we'll.
I was just going to say what Frank said.
Frank, can you repeat that? I was trying to interrupt you, and I missed it. With regard to the echo bit, you could use earbuds or a headset, you know, so if people were at systems with, and then plugged in, that would reduce the, the echo issue and all the sound confusion. Other comments or questions? Bob, we had talked, I think, last week about June 3rd as a drop dead date for, you know, deciding which way we're going to go. I think that, that may become, that's less daunting, I guess, since it's past the House, and I guess we'll, we'll play it by ear for next Wednesday and see, you know, how close they are if they've passed it, or how close they are.
Why don't we? And, because we could stop the virtual town meeting at any point, that I think our challenge would be the longer we go, the more likely we are to postpone June 15 and have to execute a football field or high school plan. And I've not been putting those plans in place in earnest right now, because we've got our hands full with this one.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work. It sounds like it's coming together, and we'll look forward to a great show on June 15th.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Stay well, everybody. Yeah. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Item 6A, discussion of the reopening roadmap. Mr. Dennehy, do you want to take this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So there's a lot of stuff going on behind the curtains to try to reactivate some of the crews around town. I think the general public will see more activity in the coming week from a public works, parks, cemeteries, consolidated facilities type operations. Additionally, Jim Segrow is going to come on and talk later tonight about the transition. Going to have to try to make town hall a little different than we knew it to be in early March with the help of our IT department. Bill Ritchie is also working with our chief procurement officer to secure necessary materials to make sure that when we open the doors at our different town buildings, they're safe, both for the workers and for the customers, the residents. I know the library had started their curbside service program on Tuesday. I need to check in with Will and see how that's going. I went through the parking lot yesterday and today and saw a good bit of activity there. So just, we're still waiting for some guidance from the state. The Parks and Recreation Board met today. Unfortunately, the handbook for summer camps, which was due out yesterday, still has not been released, so they're still waiting for a little bit of guidance. They're working with Caroline Cincella as our, most groups in town, Caroline has been spread very thin. She went down to speak to the cemetery workers today about using some shared space. She worked with Will and the library folks to get the library curbside program back up. And she's been working with Christine Danton over at the Council on Aging. Christine's going to run an outdoor exercise walk next Wednesday. So this, you'll start to see some things around town being reactivated, understanding that we're still following the executive orders of the governor as they phase in and ultimately requiring Caroline Cincella and the board of health to sign off on all these steps that we take. But I think people will see different buildings in town when we do open them up for business, things like splash guards and tape and identification markers on the floor that promote social distancing. So all this stuff's going on behind the curtain. Understandably, it doesn't take long for a parks department or a cemetery or a public works group to get behind on their work. So we're going to, we have a conference call set up for tomorrow morning to see how we can start to bring some of those folks back that work in unconfined areas where social distancing isn't a problem, to get them back and start grinding out some of the work that they've fallen behind on. So, any questions or comments?
Looks like, looks like we don't have any. Oh, it looks like we don't have any questions or comments on that at this point. If there's nothing further on this, we can move to item 5, 6B, which is a discussion of the, of the rent abatement, rent abatement for town lessees. We reached out to, we reached out to.
Brian Chef.
Brian Chef, sorry. Brian Chef and Bill Coff, Brian Chef of the Discovery Schoolhouse and Bill Cofflin of the Yacht Club told them that, that the, the library, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the, Art Center had requested an abatement for the month of June and we wanted to discuss with them if they were going to make the same request. Both Mr. Chef and Mr. Cofflin appreciated us reaching out to them, but both indicated that at this time they thought they were okay for June and that they were not going to request a rent abatement for June because of their particular circumstances. And we told them that if they did need assistance later on, to let us know. So, so that's, so that's where that stood. It was very, it was a very positive thing for them to, to not request it, even though they could have. They recognized town's financial situation is tenuous as well and since they didn't need to do it, they decided not to do it. So it was very, it was very nice of them to do that. So any other comments or questions on the rent abatement for the town lessees? Ms. Collins?
I just also want to say that that's a very hopeful sign to me, that they're in pretty deep right now. So I'm glad to have that news for that reason as well, but I agree with you that I do appreciate really taking a good look at their circumstances before just giving a relaxed answer, so.
Yes, no, it was, it was, it was very nice of them to do that. Before we move to item 7, and I don't know that this is, is going to be a habit, but we received, we received a chat and recognize we're all working with technology, received a chat from a resident saying that they joined the meeting at 5, but they weren't allowed in and weren't allowed to remain on hold, tried the phone again and the same thing happened. And that when they finally got in, they were past citizen speak and so they want to participate in citizen speak. So we did already have the opportunity for citizen speak, but since there were apparently a technical issue, happy to open it up again and to, to let, this is from Cindy Christensen. So Hillary, if you could, if you could, without objection from the members, I mean, I don't, you know, without objection from members, I don't want to, it just seems to me there was a technical issue, so we don't want to stand on ceremony if there's a technical issue. So, so without objection, if you could unmute Ms. Christensen if you want to, Cindy, if you want to participate in citizen speak, you can go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe Ms. Christensen is participating through phone for audio, so I just have to find that line, one moment.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Christensen, you should be unmuted now.
Yes, I am. Cindy Christensen, 59 Collimer Street. Just to clarify, I don't believe it was a technical issue. Excuse me, Zoom operates that way if you're not allowed to be in the meeting at a specific time, which residents are not, of course, during executive, excuse me, I'm just, during executive session, it just drops you from the, from the call in and from the Zoom online. So the only thing that residents can then do is to hope that they can try again to join back in as soon as you guys open it up. So if the, possibly one way to fix that is in the future, if you can give people a guess as to when you think you'll be out of executive session, that would be helpful.
That's a good, that's a good suggestion, Cindy. Actually, we did, we did say we would try to be out by about, we thought we'd be out by about 5:20 or 5:25. We actually got out by 5, we actually got out at 5:19. So, so it was about, about the right, but it's a good suggestion and we will, we will try to do that.
Okay, thank you. Again, Cindy Christensen, 59 Collimer Street. Chair Zulus, I ask that you require Richard Wells to apologize to me for his disrespectful and inappropriate behavior and comment at the board's last citizen speak. Unless Dodd walked into his room at the very moment that I said my name, his recorded exclamation and eye roll were insulting and inappropriate, he needs to apologize for this. Next, I'm amazed and very concerned at the misinformation and truths that you, Chair Zulus, spewed during a hysterical rant at the last select board meeting. The verbal attack on three women.
Cindy, Cindy.
All of whom.
If I could.
All of whom are Milton residents and whom you recklessly named were chastised for our actions that are simply and genuinely motivated to inform and protect Milton residents from this board and the MCAAC reps, decisions that could negatively affect their health and quality of life and the prosperity of the town. Although others and I are limited in time that we can speak during citizen speak, you allow yourself all the time you want to criticize us and make up stories that you hope residents will believe if you repeat them enough. You spoke as if the words you were quoting came from the three of us. You should know that Boston Fair Skies is much more than a Facebook page. Our grassroots group works with others here in the region and across the country. We are on working groups, we hold national conference calls, and we work with members of the Quiet Skies Caucus. Some of those statements you implied the three of us made were made from our colleagues across the country who empathize with us because of the difficulties we have had trying to work with officials who seem to prefer opaque over transparent, lies over truth, and who operate in an exclusionary world where they discourage resident input using methods on display during your last meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, so item 7, which is discussion of open meeting law complaint made by Cindy Christensen against the select board and the select board's response to that complaint. This is a second complaint, the first complaint we responded to. This complaint has to do with, the complaint is that on, during our meeting on May 6th, we held an executive session to discuss her prior, Cindy Christensen's prior open meeting law complaint. And the complaint here is that that executive session, it was not appropriate because general law, chapter 30a, section 21a1 does not apply. So the complaint reads, our understanding is that according to the general, the attorney general's office, that chapter 30a, section 21a1 does apply and the attorney general's office has stated before, and I quote, "Our office has stated in past determinations that public bodies may meet in executive session under purpose one to review open meeting law complaints against the body." And so what we need to do now is respond, if we are going to respond to this complaint. And we have Mr., I think we have Mr. Freitag on the line and what we did last time and what we've done in the past is have had our council prepare a response for that. So comments or questions on this? All right, well, I'll entertain a motion. Could I just ask Mr. Freitag to tell us what the date is for the due date for the response on this? Hillary, if you could unmute Kevin Freitag. Kevin, either.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah?
Hello?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, I believe it's June 8th is the response deadline.
All right, June 8th. All right, so if we're going to have Mr. Freitag respond, we need a motion to delegate the response of this to Mr. Freitag.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we delegate to town council, Kevin Freitag, drafting or the drafting and issuance of a response to Dr. Christensen.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Well, yes. Okay, so Kevin, if you could get us, we have, we're probably going to meet next Wednesday, so we may want to. Next week, that would be good.
That's not a problem, Mr. Chair.
Great, great. All right, item 8, approval of bond anticipation notes. I think this is going to be deferred, is that right, Mr. Dennehy?
That's correct, yeah. I had a discussion with the town treasurer today that those bands will not go out, forbid until June 16th. So we have from June 16th to June 19th to sign those. There'll also be an agenda in the upcoming week or so to, for this board to approve the useful life of some of the bonded projects.
Okay, all right, so we'll put that on if we, if we meet next week, we'll put that on. Oh, no, next week, Mike, is that, that'd be for next week or the 6, or the week after?
We could do the useful life stuff next week, but the bands will have to take place. Unfortunately, and we discussed it today, that week of the bands, we couldn't do it on the 15th, which is the first night of town meeting when this board will be meeting. So we may have to do a quick pop-up meeting with an agenda item or two, including the bands, before the 19th, which is a Friday.
All right. Anything, anything further on that from the members? Item 9, approval of a Pride Month proclamation. This is similar to a proclamation that we issued last June for Pride Month. This recognizes the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, we're in questioning Pride Month and the proclamation urges all residents to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty, in addition to some of the other clauses in this proclamation. So comments or questions from the members? Or a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair, but I just want to have the proclamation in front of me.
Oh, okay.
Maybe someone else is going to make it. I'll gladly second it.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve and sign the Pride Month proclamation.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
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 Well, yes.
Well, yes. All right. Item approval of the Southeastern Public Employee Association collective bargaining. Mr. Dennehy, do you want to take us through this?
Yeah, so the, we had engaged in negotiations with the Southeastern, via, over the last two weeks. It's my understanding that they are, they are voting this evening or discussing among their union this evening about this memorandum of understanding. So at this time, I haven't, haven't gotten word that it has been ratified, so I would ask that we defer this item to the next agenda or perhaps give, give me the ability to sign on behalf of this board, should they ratify it this evening.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to authorize the town administrator to ratify, sign that ratification, sign that memorandum should they ratify that, the proposal.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Well, yes. All right. And Mike, you can report back to us on that at our next meeting.
Certainly, yeah. We'll make it a part of the next agenda regardless, but thank you.
I'm checking email because I wanted to see if there's been any further update on the Neighbors Together Fund, and I don't see any. Item 11 is the Neighbors Together Fund. This, we reported last time, is a, a fund to be established by a collaboration of the United Way, Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, Courageous Conversations for Its Racial Justice, the Town of Milton, and the Boston neighborhoods of Manapand, Dorchester, and Hyde Park, represented by Boston City Councilors Andrea Campbell and Ricardo Royer. We, we are, we were, we are pretty far along in getting that started, but this week, or actually at the end of last week, the city of Boston, I guess writ large, has indicated an interest in becoming involved and directly, and there have been several conversations between the city and the United Way about how the city would be involved. And so, and so, so that hasn't actually happened yet pending the involvement of, possible involvement of the city in addition to the neighborhoods, which, which I think is seen by those who are organizing this as beneficial. So that's where that sits. I think it's ready to go, it's just a question of who precisely is involved and whether this grows beyond just. is involved and whether this grows beyond just those neighborhoods and grows beyond to the city, to the city directly. Comments or questions on that? Mr. Wells?
So just one question, Mr. Chair, and perhaps Katie or Melinda can enlighten me on this. Do we know if they're going to reach out to nonprofits to try and secure additional dollars as like most food pantries would, or most organizations similar to this? Do we know if they're gonna take a proactive step in this?
Well, actually, I, I think I can answer, I can defer, I think the idea is to raise money, to do fundraising through a web, primarily through a webpage or online fundraising, and through other outreach to raise money, and then to, to distribute that money to meaning residents in Milton and Boston, to the organizations in Milton, whether it be the Residence Fund, or the Food Pantry in Milton, and/or other organizations in Manapand, Dorchester, and Hyde Park. So that was really the idea, to raise the money that way, and, and the last discussion we had with the United Way was that they were gonna seed that fund with a fairly substantial amount of money.
Okay.
Ms. Collins?
Also, I'm not sure if this is what you meant, Richard, and I haven't been that involved in this end of it, but in the beginning, everyone was asked to define the organizations that would be recipients, and so we named the Food Pantry and Milton Residence Fund. Not that that couldn't be changed, but that so far is, that's how it worked. I don't know if it's still working that way, which Mike already made.
I'm not specifically talking about recipients, I'm talking about places that they may wish to target to gain funds for their goal, for their project. That's what I'm referring to. Just as like the Governor Stoughton, just as where the trustees of the Governor Stoughton, Milton Residence Fund, the Food Pantry come to us, I mean, there is a multitude of avenues that people would seek, and the fact that, and I talked about, so that they meet the criteria, the 501 criteria, through the United Way, I'm just wondering if they're going to be proactive in that manner, because there are, there are a lot of groups out there that do do a great deal of work that could help them with this. That's just, that's just a question, even if no one knows now, I'm just wondering if they're going to, I think a proactive effort initially is really gonna help them, because I think they, as you say, fly the flag, they're gonna wanna fly their flag so that their flag becomes known.
Richard, I think the only thing I would add to that is, at the last meeting, the chair mentioned that the United Way is gonna be funding this through some seed money.
Okay.
Will be some funding to start, but I think we could suggest, maybe the chair could suggest to Karen, Grace Horan, and the rest of the group that they could do some active fundraising to private donors for this, but, and I guess when we put out a press release, at least that will go to, will let people in town, go through the town email channels, and at least the way it's worked in some of the other towns is it's really just been a fundraising page, as the chair said, but we could, we could suggest that they be a little more proactive with organizations and foundations and trust funds to seek additional donors.
Like, one of the things, the founder of my brother's keeper was here in Milton yesterday, and I had a long conversation with him in the square, and, you know, one of the things that, that is, we know that the pressure is really enormous, like our schools are giving, I think it's 3,500 meals a week out right now, and that could, that could end June 30th, so the demand is gonna exist, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm sorry for my three-year-old puppy, as once I'm attached, so I'll stop talking.
Other, other comments or questions? So hopefully we'll, we'll be able to report next week that this is up and running, you know, it's certainly not bad news, that, because, you know, I think additional involvement is, is a good thing on the part of the city, and partnering with the city, so, so that, I guess, is to be continued. Item 12, on the IT department, the post-COVID-19 Town Hall operations. And Hillary, if you could unmute Jim Sgroi, if he's on the line? And Mr. Dennehy, I guess, as well, is Jim on the line?
I believe he's 3-800. Is that you, Jim?
No, that's me from the police junking.
Oh, sorry, chief.
Hello?
Hillary, is Mr. Sgroi 0975, perhaps?
Hello?
Jim, is that you?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Jim.
Oh, okay. Well, good evening, everyone. If I could take one moment to bring up a point that this has kinda gotten lost in the shuffle. Several months ago, the town was awarded a cybersecurity grant through the state, and it's in its second phase right now, and I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention here, that it's, like I say, it's been kinda put to the, to the back burner with everything else that's been going on, but everyone should have received what they refer to as Assignment One, and the 1st of May, everyone should be receiving a, another segment, Assignment Two, and within these assignments, there are several modules that everyone needs to, to complete, so if people could just take the time to go through it, complete the, the program, it would be well appreciated by the IT department, and especially the state who is providing the funding for our participation in this program, which is really very important. It not only helps people that are, you know, working for the town and using town equipment, but it also can help people with their, their own personal computing, so I just wanted to mention that before we started talking about the reintroducing of people into the town office building, so I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Questions or comments from the members on that point?
Mr. Chair, is he going to address what's on the agenda here, as far as Town Hall operations, IT-wise, post-COVID-19?
I think so, I think.
Okay.
Initial.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, you're welcome. So as far as the reintroducing people into the town office building, setting up appointments, we have a product that is available through our existing program called Office 365. It's called bookings, which is a calendar module, and we have reached out to many departments as far as how they would implement this, and offered them training, so we're ready to go with this as soon as, it's, it's not a complicated process, so as soon as we're ready to go, we will go office to office, set it up, and make sure that everybody is trained appropriately for it. And like I said, the training is minimal, it's, it's something that we own, it's not gonna cost us anything, so I think it's a, that's a good solution for setting up appointments, people that want to come in to do business with the town departments. So if any questions on that, I would be happy to answer.
Questions on that, on that point?
If I could just add, if I could just add to that, Mr. Chair, and before the vice chair chimes in, so there are, there are some very confined areas in Town Hall, we, we sometimes have trouble placing employees, any of the people watching, or as this board knows, when you, when you go to get a permit in Town Hall, there could be a queue of eight to 10 people there each morning, and in a world of social distancing, that's not gonna be acceptable, so, I know Mr. Prondak has, has a similar system of bookings, but it would be along those lines where the town clerk, the assessor's office, possibly the treasurer's office permitting, public works engineering, where people come in, we do it by appointment only, we're looking to set up the Blue, or the Baker with aggregate, collect-all type of, of computer software where people can do a lot of stuff through that, without, without, you know, violating social distancing, we're trying to automate some forms, Jennifer's been looking at the forms that she has, as, as many of the departments, Alan Bishop did a very good job of automating a lot of the public works forms, but we're looking at trying to limit activity, physical activity in the building, so Jim is taking steps along those lines, working with the subject matter experts and department heads to, to come up with a solution so that we can still continue to handle as much business as we have in the past, understanding that social distancing is, is the theme going forward.
Ms. Collins?
Well, I was just wondering if we need additional, like hardware upgrades, and if we've identified any training that people might need. I, I know, I, I was talking to someone today, and I asked them to set up a conference call, and they don't know how to use the conference function on the phones, and that might be a really useful thing for, for people who, you know, can't really sit at a conference table together, but are still in town, they, they, they could use that, so I didn't know if there was like a training schedule, as I said, if you need hardware or, or anything.
Yeah, as far, as far as the basement conference rooms, our plan is to utilize, as Mike said, the Baker conference room, which we figured could handle one, one scenario down there as far as somebody coming in to have a meeting, and we were looking at the Blue Room, possibly, you know, rearranging the tables down there to accommodate possibly three, maybe four areas where we could set up, we're gonna set up computers, and we're gonna have them with webcams and microphones, so people can get involved with Zoom or the web, or the WebEx, and there are phones, there, in these conference rooms, that do have the conferencing feature, and when we put these phones in, everyone did get training on them, and they have tablets on, on how to do these functions, but as time goes on, people forget if they don't use it all the time, so we can certainly go through a little refresher on that, so people will, will be able to do those things, because I know how difficult it is when you're in a, when you're in a bind and you're trying to figure something out, and then all of a sudden it's like, God, I can't, I can't get it to work, and you get frustrated. So yes, we will go around and offer training to, to the folks on that. But the other issue that we, we're gonna deal with here is relocating any workstations within existing offices, so we can distance people that are not comfortable in the environment that they're in now, to, to get the separation, so that's on the table, and I'm looking to acquire monitors that have the webcam and microphones built into them to accommodate the, like I said, the Zoom and the, and the WebEx features. Believe it or not, it was extremely difficult trying to get these components where they're in very short supply, so I was lucky to secure several of them for our, our town. So that's in the works, and, let's see, what else do I have here? And laptops, we were also going to issue any additional laptops to folks that, that need them to work from home and continue to not have to come into the town office building, so all these, these pieces are in play, and like I say, we'll, we'll get that information out to everybody, and like I said, we're, you know, we're very flexible as far as the needs of everybody, so all they need to do is call us, they know how to get in touch with us, so we're there for them.
And if I could add one more thing, if you could imagine, on March 13th, we thought we had top-of-the-line computers at everybody's desk, I'm to find out, in this world of Zoom and WebEx, you know, we, we're rethinking the way we order desktops and, and the ability to have laptops for those people that need to work remotely. There's still a little bit of a hiccup if people wanna print at home, I know some, some of the members of this board have tried to print before, Jim's talked about the, the technical problems that they have with, with printing from home through the town's network server, but yeah, most of these desktop computers that we have, just in the flick of a switch, almost became, I won't say obsolete, but outdated because they don't have microphone and camera capability, so we're working on, on bringing those in, into the, the new normal, if you will.
Thank you.
Right, like, excuse me, as far as, as far as the, the printing capability, we've looked into, you know, what needs to be done for the, for the employees to, to get that functionality. One, one product that we currently have now, which is, it's WTI Zobrio, that product will not allow printing at home through the network, but all other functionality that we have, other software, will print at home. Softwrite, which is the financial product, that should work by printing at home, and we're, we're in the process of securing more printers that we can distribute to those that might, might need them for, for personal use at home. And again, I, I'm thinking down the line, our inventory equipment now might be towards the laptop as opposed to the workstation, where people can transport it from their home back to Town Hall, and we think that might be the way to go moving forward.
Can I ask another question? Would, would, the cost of hardware and things like that, would we be able to recoup that? Richard's nodding yes, so, okay, yeah, I just, I, it seems like a legitimate COVID-19 related expense, but I just, I need to check, this is sounding expensive, but we need it, and people are.
Yes, I believe we are, we are qualified for that, and the, the, the equipment that we're currently looking at will be covered under that program.
I know Amy Dux has been involved in that, and Mike has been involved in putting together the list of expenses, seeking reimbursement for.
Right, I saw that we, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, after you, I think it was an additional 10 laptops that we've, we've ordered.
That's correct, Mike.
These are the tools that come out of COVID that we need, that this is the type of money we can go for, just as was 100 inches of snow, if it's snow fighting equipment and things like that, this is something that has changed the way, technology-wise, we have to do business, and it's part of the continuity of government, so I'm sure Jimmy, as you know, Amy's right on top of the better, I think decent, better that we do the, identify it and do it now while the money's available versus missing the, I don't want, I think we should miss any windows here, we should stay on top of this, I think that's excellent, they're moving that way, just as Mr. Dennehy said, we're operating in a different world now, at least for the time being.
Other comments or questions from the members? Jim, thank you, and I'm sure there'll be a lot to do over the next few weeks and months as we kind of reform, refashion how we do business here in Town Hall, but thank you, thank you for that, very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and like I said, we're, we're readily available, and we're looking forward to getting everybody back to Town Hall and receiving residents again, so with that, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Item 14, I'm sorry, item 13, appointing a tenant to the town administration's Planning Director Selection Committee. Mike, do you wanna take this and tell people what you're looking for here?
Sure, so, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, so the, the posting for the Planning Director position ends on May 29th, this coming Friday, looking to put a committee together for that, that would sit with a member from this board, a member from the Planning Board, and Paige Appolito in a, in a first series of interviews, which should take place, hopefully the first week of June, if not the second week of June. I'd love to have a member of this board on that committee. I'd love to have a member of this board on that committee.
All right, so who wants to be on the committee?
I think it's a good idea to put together such a committee. I'm glad you're including the Planning Board in it. If any, I'm willing to do it, but if anyone feels strongly that they're very interested in doing it, I'd certainly defer it to anyone else on the board.
I mean, I'm happy to help if that's needed, but I'm equally happy for you to do a great job.
If you'd like, Melinda, I'll make a motion to nominate you to be on.
No, no. I was going to say, I was just going to say, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Katie Conlon to be on the selection committee for the Planning Director.
I'll second that.
All right, but I already made a motion.
No, no, I don't think you made that, Katie, I think Melinda beat you.
Really? Oh, okay.
It really doesn't matter to me, Melinda, if you really would like to do it. The topic came up on the Affordable Housing Trustees Meeting. So if you're, if you would like to do it, I'm happy to defer. I was on the prize search for the Assistant Town Planner Committee a few years ago. So I'm happy to, you know, have you be on this one, especially where you have the Affordable Housing.
Well, I.
Can you call us a lot of snow when you decide?
No, I just, I just didn't want, I didn't want you to think that you had to do it. But I'm happy for you to do that, I really appreciate it. And since you've, you helped choose Lauren, I think also that'll be a strength for us.
Actually, it was Tim, I wasn't involved with the Lauren one.
Oh, it was Tim, awesome, great selection.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm willing to do it, but I just, you know, if you felt strongly that you wanted to do it, I was happy to do it.
All right, so I think we have a motion, it's mainly seconded to a form of Katie, without objection, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
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 Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Zul is yes, all right.
Thank you, Member Conlon, thank you, board.
Thank you, Mike.
Item 14 is a discussion of a warrant, a potential warrant article to establish 20 mile per hour safety zones under Mass General Law Chapter 90, Section 18B. Mike, is this why Chase and Chief King are here?
Yes, that's correct, I'd love to have their input on this. They worked on this and I apologize, this fell through the cracks in what was the dynamic of COVID-19 and putting town meeting together and having moved. So I think their subject matter expertise in this would go a long way to defining it.
So Hillary, if you could make sure that Chase is unmuted as well, I see Chief King is unmuted. So this potential warrant article, and also Kevin Freitag may want to weigh in as well. This potential warrant article was just was by the East Milton Neighborhood. And essentially what it is, is we would be seeking town meeting approval for the town's section 890 of the general laws, which authorizes the Select Board to establish a safety zone, designated safety zone in any, on any street in the town that's not a highway with a speed limit of 20 miles per hour. Generally, those areas for which safety zones at 20 miles an hour are established are areas near parks and playgrounds, senior citizen housing centers, hospitals, high schools, and daycare facilities, et cetera. So this article, which has now been a draft, has been put together by town council, if this were presented and accepted by town meeting, it would, again, allow the Select Board to designate the zones in town. And I think East Milton Neighborhood Association was particularly interested in this area. With that, maybe we can ask Mr. Berkeley and Chief King to weigh in on this before we have a discussion. Chase, do you want to go first and then we'll ask Chief King?
Sure, yes, so this came about through the Municipal Modernization Act, which also enabled us to establish the townwide speed limit of 25 miles per hour, unless posted in thickly settled districts. So, you know, following the Modernization Act, MassDOT put together some, what they call minimum criteria for these safety zones, which includes the road needs to be directly abutting the area where vulnerable road users would be. The safety zone needs to be at least one quarter of a mile in length and no more than 500 feet beyond the side street, unless that vulnerable land continues past that side street as well. And so there are some guidelines and it does say in the MassDOT Speed zoning manual that engineering review should be conducted on these zones just because there is a potential to create an unsafe situation, particularly if you had a straight road with a higher speed limit and all of a sudden you just drop the speed limit down to 20, that creates an unsafe situation for those drivers. So following those guidelines, we could look at any potential areas around town that where they may be useful and then help reduce speeds. Certainly, there's an expectation, and when you talk to many of the communities that have implemented these, that the expectation needs to be set that they are generally not able to be enforced. And I'll, you know, certainly Chief King weigh in on that. But it's more of setting a tone and a deterrent than it is an expectation that every time someone exceeds 20 miles per hour, they're going to get a ticket. So I think that pretty much covers the whole intention of it. I leave it to Chief and maybe Kevin, just on the procedural part of accepting it through town meeting. And then, you know, I assume this would just follow our Normal Traffic Commission recommendation to the board for adoption.
Well, yeah, actually, this article would just give the town, if we were just voting to accept, sexually, that would give the authority to actually do it, to go through that process. The article is just accepted for the purpose of going through it. Chief King, do you want to weigh in on this as well?
I'll just say, you know, Chase really broke it down pretty well. And Mike, your comment just there about putting the mechanism into place, so to speak, I agree with that. This is just to put the mechanism in place, I support that. That way you have it there if it is ever utilized. I do think, you know, if and when the time comes thereafter, we still should make sure it goes through the proper vetting process and meets the appropriate criteria, isn't just, you know, casually put out there. You know, we do the engineering studies and stuff like that. You know, there is an enforcement issue if you have roads and all of a sudden you drop to 20 and then back up again, you know, a quarter mile later. That is very difficult to enforce, but that's, you know, news and chase is where it does set the tone and it does give us a little more ability to, you know, enforce the speed limit. But I support the mechanism being in place. You know, it's really, you know, just laying the foundation. So if we want to act on it in the future, we can. But I think proper vetting at the Traffic Commission and then by the board itself before voting in approval, the actual individual ones is important.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, comments or questions? Ms. Collins.
This is for the July, the.
If, well, if the warrant committee is willing and able to take a look at it, I'd like to include it in July, if possible, and against, thinking that we can get through that as part of the July time. But I think sooner is better than later, on something like that. That's my own personal view. Ms. Collins.
Mrs. Chair.
I'll support including it in the July warrant. I know that probably needs to go on a future agenda to include the articles in the warrant, but I'm in favor of seeking the authorization in July.
Mr. Wells. I agree, I concur with both the Chief and Chase. It's, you know, I'm, you've seen me in this board, I'm a firm believer of putting the tool in the toolbox. And if you need to, you know, take the steps to do, to use it, then they're both, as I say, the process is there for them to do it. One good point that they did talk about, I don't want to talk long in this, is that people don't always understand, you know, speed limit is the tone of enforcement and then it's the letter of enforcement. The tone of enforcement is far more powerful at times and things like this than the letter of enforcement. So I think both of them hit it right on the head. So I, I'm with Katie, I would, and yourself, I would support that if we can vote on this tonight, that we put it on for our next meeting for approval, if that's okay.
Other comments or questions? So to Mike Dennehy, why don't we, we have the draft article and we have the draft recommendation. I think there's a view of a majority of the committee that we're going to do this when we get it on the agenda. Maybe we get this in the hands of the warrant committee as soon as possible and then get it on.
Certainly.
And then get it on for a vote, you know, next Wednesday if we have a meeting next Wednesday.
Excellent, I'll do that, yep.
Certainly, to the members?
It's fine with me.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you for that. Thank you, Chase Berkeley, and thank you, Chief King, very helpful to have you along and to give you perspective. It's very helpful, thank you. And thank you to Kevin Freitag for moving very quickly in getting this article and recommendation drafted. That was very quick and good work, so thank you for that.
It's great when you have a statute you can draw right from, it's all codified, makes it a lot easier.
Item 15, discussion of the Select Board Goals and Agendas, I mean Goals and Objectives, sorry. We discussed this, started discussing this last meeting. And I think Mr. Farrington may want to go through.
Yeah, 100%, Mike, thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yep, you're coming through loud and clear.
Okay, great, yeah, if I lose you, then it's on me, you're in and out a little bit, but it's my connection probably. But yeah, so I was tasked as being the board's representative to help oversee some of the transitions that we have recently gone through with respect to certain positions in town government, town agencies, what have you, specifically Assistant Planning Director. Regrettably, we lost a very talented, qualified young woman in Lauren, who left to take another position. But she was replaced by Allison Quinn from the Boston Redevelopment Authority and she's been with us now for about nine months and by all accounts is doing a terrific job. And I think she might be involved in the process for perhaps applying for the Planning Director position. We had another transition on the Council on Aging. Longtime Council on Aging Director Marion Sullivan retired. And as we all know, our former Select Board employee Christine Stanton was selected for that position. She assumed that role January 1st and she's encountered some challenges in this COVID situation as we all have. But by all accounts, she's also doing a terrific, fantastic job and she has some great ideas for the role. And she's started to implement some of those. And, you know, is doing the best she can in less than ideal circumstances. We had another transition where we lost a heavyweight legal minds to well deserved retirement. Mr. John Flynn has been with us, I think we discussed this a few weeks ago and I was caught off guard, I was shocked, it was, was it like 35 years? Close to that. And Kevin Freitag has assumed that position and it's been a seamless transition. And I don't, I know all of you, all of us interact and relate with Mr. Freitag on all of our meetings. And so I know that each of you can speak firsthand to his ability and his knowledge. He's done a fantastic, wonderful job so far and will continue to do so, I'm sure, as we all know. So yeah, I mean, that's it in a nutshell. I know that Paige continues to do her work and assuming a lot of the HR responsibilities for town government. She is, part of her title is Assistant Town Administrator, so she's there when needed. And I'm really excited to see who we select, or recommend rather, for Michael to hire as the new town planner. So look forward to that.
All right, great, thank you, Tony. A lot of changes, a lot of good changes, a lot of forward motion in that, so thank you. Anything else from any of the members on the Goals and Objectives? I think the next step will be to take anything that is left over and take it into the retreat sometime during the summer and figure out what they are for next year. But that'll happen sometime in the future. All right, item 16, reapportment to the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we reappoint Eric Ask of 10 Stoddard Lane, Michael Blackwell of 357 Blue Hills Parkway, Joseph, I think that should be Sloan of 55 Carrot Avenue, Vincent Ladonski of 22 Marilyn Road, and Lee Formo of 58 Aberdeen Road to the Bicycle Advisory Committee through May 3rd, 2021.
Second, and this will be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
And Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
Tony, if you could mute when you're not talking, because we're getting a little bit of noise, appreciate it.
Yep, 100%, well done.
And then, so do, item 17 is reapportment of the Conservation Commission. Do we have that, Mike, are we going to defer that?
We are going to defer that, Mr. Chair, we're going to defer that.
Without objection, we'll defer item 17. Item 18, the Town Administrator's Report, Mr. Dennis.
I just have one thing, we were all there on Monday. Really have to thank Kevin Cook, he was, he was, he was the leader that day. I think Milton did something that most communities didn't do. It was Kevin's mission to honor our fallen veterans. He put it together, he achieved it, he executed it, and I think it was awesome. We had wonderful speakers, Madam Vice Chair gave a wonderful presentation. I think it was phenomenal, I hope people got to see it live and if not, they should take some time to see it on Milton Access TV. Obviously, thanks, thank you to Michael Lynch as well and Lisa Hearn at the cemetery and everybody that had a partner, both the Milton Police and Milton Fire Color Guard. It was, it was pretty spectacular. The first time in a while I noticed some airplanes overhead, which I haven't in recent months. But kudos to Kevin, he really wanted this and he really got it done. So that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Item 19, Chair's Report. First item is a topic that we did not anticipate at the time that we would, had put together the agenda. And that is a grant opportunity from the MAPC, I think it's from Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, for up to $400,000. And this is something that many times there are grants that don't require the board's attention, but apparently in this application, it asks for the town's CEO to sign off on this. So that's why it is, it would be, but without objection from the members. And I'll have Aspas Dennehy to describe it and then if there's no objection from members, we will take action on this. So Mike, if you could just kind of give us the highlights of this?
Sure, so Allison Quinn made me aware of it. This is, as you said, Metropolitan Area Planning Committee. They're facilitating a regional micro enterprise application with mass growth capital. Believe it or not, Milton, as of the last time this information was collected in 2016 by MAPC, had 456 micro enterprises. So this is an application I will file on behalf of those businesses. These are grants, obviously COVID-19 related. There are some qualifications and that's where, if approved, Mass Growth Capital Corporation will work through this. They do ask that it be submitted, there's a series of questions, what community? I'm the submitter, the amount requested, and basically two sentences summarizing the. And basically two sentences summarizing the needs of the businesses in our community. And I think, I think we can all agree that this is very applicable due to COVID-19. Each business, if, if this grant is authorized, each micro enterprise, if you will, can receive up to $10,000. And this, there's some other stuff. The deadline is this evening. If this board should grant me the power to be the signatory, I have the application all drawn up. I just have to hit the send button. So I don't know if Vice Chair Collins wants to, wants to add anything. Or I did see Allison on the call earlier today. She may want to give her two cents as well.
Hillary, could, Hillary, could you unmute Allison, please? Allison.
Hi, Allison.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great. So, you know, Mike was spot on with his summary of how this operates. The data that we got from MAPC did indicate that we have 456 micro businesses. And the threshold is those businesses would need to have five or less employees. It was really difficult for us to kind of understand the landscape of exactly how many businesses would, would feel this kind of intensity due to the COVID-19 crisis. But there's also an income ceiling, if you will. So whoever is applying also has to meet 80% or below of the HUD Guidelines for Income Eligibility. So they have a couple of their own safety nets that are built into this application process. And the third-party vendor will take care of all, all of the application process pieces for us. So I think that's basically, you know, the nuts and bolts of it.
Thank, thank you, Allison. Questions or comments from the members?
Hello. So go ahead, Katie.
Oh, go ahead, Richard. You were first.
No, no, I was just going to say hello. I came in the last time I saw Allison, so I was. I'm all good. I'm good.
You.
I just wanted to ask, so is it enough to authorize the town administrator? Do we need the chair to also sign off on this? Or, or is it enough that we vote tonight? Does that constitute the?
That's correct, Katie. The vote tonight will, will allow Mike to be the signatory on our application. We're applying with this regionally because typically Milton would not qualify for these types of grants because of your population. You're at the 27,000. And I believe that the threshold is well above that.
Okay, thank you.
So I think that, you know, if, if the board wants to take it up without objection, I think the motion would be to authorize Mr. Dennehy to submit the application for the grant on behalf of the town.
I'll make that move. Yeah, so move second.
So motion's been made. Mr. Wells is seconded by Ms. Collins, I believe.
No, it was made, it was made by Ms. Collins and I seconded it.
Okay. Made by Ms. Collins, seconded by Mr. Wells. And any further discussion on this?
Thank you, Allison.
Ms. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
All right. So we get that grant application in. Thank you, Al.
Thank you for your time. Stay healthy.
Thank you, Allison.
All right. See you all soon.
Arguably, well, we don't need to get into that. I was going to say arguably, the town administrator, you could argue that he had the authority to submit that grant, but under the language. But, but this is clearly better, you know, probably the better way to do it.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, if you look at the FAQ from the NOFA, does, it's, it's, it's cloudy, the language, and that's why this just was safer.
All right. The second thing I have is, is just a comment on the reopening of our businesses. I was lucky enough to get my hair cut in town yesterday. And I'm not going to mention the proprietor because I'm sure the other, or other barber shop in town is doing great as well. But I just have to say that the procedures that they went through were great. The, the, the notice of the, of the procedures laid it out in clear detail. There was, you know, people took a number. There was a deli sign, a deli sign with everyone's number. We stood outside at, at distances with masks on. When you went in, your temperature was taken. And everything was clean between each person. And then when we left, we signed on, you would sign your name and telephone number and, and indicate who gave you the, the service. So, you know, the event that there's any tracing needed. So I just, I thought it was a great job. And I, I think, you know, I think a lot of it is, is because of the good work of our Public Health Director, Carolyn Consella, getting the word out. And because we have, we have great small businesses here in town that are taking this very seriously. So lucky enough to get my hair cut and really impressed with the procedure that was, that was in place. So that's all I have. Members, report. Ms. Collins?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Farrington?
Yeah, I'm all set, Mike. Thanks.
Ms. Conlon?
Some of us obviously still need to get our hair cut. That would be me. I wanted to, yeah, thank Melinda Collins for representing us so well at the Memorial Day event. So thank you, Melinda.
Here, here. Mr. Mr. Wells?
I had the exact same sentiments, Ms. Conlon, being me too. And I also want to thank that veteran detective. He did a great job. He was very good. I've been on the Constitution many times. I've actually sailed on it twice. He did a great job. It was awesome. And Kevin made a good selection, as always.
All right. Item 21, public comment response. Have anything? Mr. Wells?
I, I'll, I'll respond. As you know, you and I both got the same email today. I have no clue at all what Dr. Christensen is referring to. I, I don't have a clue, but, so I'm not going to apologize because I have no clue what she's referring to. So I've sat through many public comments from Dr. Christensen, investigations, reports, comments, meetings. She has the right as a citizen to say whatever she wants. And I expect that. But as to what she's referring to, I have no clue. That's it.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I guess, I guess I'd just like to add, you know, this board is the chief governing board in town. We're elected to represent the residents of Milton, 27,000 people. I think we just need to move on. I think we've indulged a lot in Citizen Speak on issues that were raised tonight and raised at previous meetings. I think they've been asked and answered. I think there are, you spoke to some of the issues regarding the airplanes at the last meeting, Mr. Chair, at the end of Mr. Doherty's presentation. And I would just like us to move on. We have a lot on our plate. This board is a volunteer board. A lot of us have day jobs. Most of us have day jobs and we all have family issues. We all have a lot of things to deal with. And since the middle of March, this board's been meeting most weeks, twice a week. This week, we've only had one meeting. But, you know, it used to be twice a month. We've been meeting almost, almost every week, twice a week. And we've had an awful lot going on in between meetings. All of us serve on other committees. There's a lot of pressing issues before the board related to COVID and relating to housing and 40B applications and budget and a lot of uncertainty at the state. There's so many important issues before the town, including airplane issues. And I, I think we've done a good job focusing on those. And we're always going to have comments made at Citizen Speak. But we just need to continue to keep our focus on getting the important work of the residents done. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you. The only thing I'll say is, for Citizen Speak, you know, we do have a policy. I don't know if we, we actually voted the final policy. But the draft policy was, you know, to make sure we encourage all speakers to present their marks in a respectful manner. And Citizen Speak is really a venue for people that the Select Board, that are within the scope of the Select Board's authority. It's really not a forum for personal accusations. And so we're going to try to stick to issues. You know, people will have things to say, but we're going to try to stick to issues in Citizen Speak rather than any kind of personal, personal, personal issues. You know, it's hard for me to stop when they're saying it about me. So, so I guess we'll let that go. But, but, you know, hopefully we can, you know, focus on issues and not, not anything that's personal. So, all right. Item 22, approval of meeting minutes. We have the May 6th and the May 13th meeting minutes. Are we in a position to approve those?
Mr. Chair, I, I'm sorry, Melinda was speaking. I didn't want to.
Oh, no, no, go ahead, Katie.
I just, I sent over to Hillary, there was a question on one of them about whether the statements attributed to mass housing were correct. I don't know if we, Hillary, I think you said you addressed the comments, but I, I don't know if that one was answered, if that was changed. I just want to be sure we're, it sounded like it was something that was really our position rather than mass housing's position on the May 6th minutes. And I just wanted to double check that. Before we.
Thank you, Ms. Conlon. I would defer to Chair Zulis on that. If, if that hasn't been looked over, I would wait to defer. I would, I would wait to approve those.
Yeah, I tried to look at the change this afternoon, but I just didn't have time. So if we could defer on that till next time, I apologize. I should, I should look at that because, and I just didn't have time this afternoon. So, so maybe we can defer on the, on the 6th. What about the meeting, the minutes for the 13th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on the 13th.
Second.
This is the main second, a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Item 23, confirm future meeting dates. Next Wednesday, I think we should meet next Wednesday. Even though I want to try to get away from every, every week. But, but next week would be the last meeting before the election. It's a meeting, I think we need the meeting to, to, um, address, to talk about the virtual town meeting. We need to perhaps do the bands issue. And not only is it Tony Farrington's birthday tonight, but that, next week could be his last meeting. But we need to have a meeting before the, so that's my suggestion, that we have a meeting after. And I'm agnostic as to whether it'd be five or seven. I can't, you know, I, I leave that to, anyway. Thoughts, comments, the members?
Well, if we have, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Melinda.
I, I was just going to say, to, to be fair to Katie, since we met at five today, and I know this time is difficult, we, if we do it, we should have it at seven.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay. All right. So.
You all right with it, Katie?
Yeah, I mean, I, I probably can do five next week, given that we're all in the office today. But given that we're usually working from home. But, and actually, most residents are working from home. So it's, having a meeting at 5:00 is probably not too much of an issue for Citizen Speaker, people who want to watch the meetings. But at some point, we should probably get back to 7:00 in the regular schedule. I, I can do either one next week.
WBZ News Traffic reported tonight that traffic is back to normal on 93 South in the afternoon.
No.
I, I, I have a message from, from Hillary that Court of Appeals is at 7:30 that night. But now we have two Zooms to enable us to both to be televised. So apparently we're not limited by Zoom.
Any longer.
Yeah, so, so what, what do people want to do? I, I, do we want to go to seven because that was our typical time? Or, or do we want to do five? You know, again, I, I don't.
I'm fine with either.
So am I.
And let's do five.
Okay. It's good for you, Mr. Zulis. 5:00 is good for you.
It is good for me. That's right. I'm much more energetic.
I, I'm much more energetic, too.
All right.
7:02, not 11:02.
Richard, some of us actually sleep.
Oh, yeah. I, I know that one. I'll sleep when I'm dead.
Future agenda items, anything else? Item 24, anything else other than what we've already men, already mentioned? So the question, if, if, if not, the question is, do we adjourn and go to the trustees of Governor Stotan and sing happy birthday to Tony as Governor Stotan trustee? Or do we sing happy birthday to Tony as members of the board?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Tony.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Richard.
We should have got a cake.
Nobody wants, nobody wants to, we have a virtual cake.
There's only one, there's only one singer in my house and she's not here right now.
So we'll, we'll dispense with the singing. Happy birthday. All right. So I'll extend a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Thanks. Second.
All those in favor? Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes, so we are adjourned and we will begin our meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stotan Fund. His discussion and approval of an Unquity House grant we received last week, I guess it was. Maybe it was two weeks ago. A question, a request from the Unquity House. And I don't know that there is a number on this.
Wasn't it, wasn't it just to roll over that $500 that was remaining?
More than, we give them more than 500 a year, so.
Right, but they, but they have 500 left over from the previous year. And I think, what, was that the request? It, it came in a while ago and I thought.
Actually, they're, they're asking for funds to be renewed for another year.
Oh, I'm, maybe I missed that one. Okay.
So.
And I'd make that motion if you'd accept it to, to renew for, for the next year.
But what, what was you on to the prior year? Because I was thinking we might want to increase it, given.
Exactly.
What they've told us is that they're now opening a little store at the, at Unquity House to, to help people who are in need with food bags, with buying or subsidizing some essential purchases. Like, you know, it says here frozen dinners, eggs, bread, milk, paper products, canned goods. So I'm just trying to look back. We have their meeting materials, the list of the Governor Stotan. It looks like we gave the food pantry.
It's small, Katie. I, I think it's like $1,500 or $2,000.
No, no, it's not that, Richard. It's.
Is it more? Yeah.
Actually, it looks like.
I thought I looked.
We have here November of 2019 Dairy Voucher, Milton Food Pantry, $23,000. Now, that seems high to me, but.
Right, but that's, but that's not Unquity House.
That's not Unquity. I, I thought the equity were, I thought when I looked at their numbers, it was small.
Right. And that, that's why I, I, I'm trying to find it. I thought I had it right here.
I thought it was under $2,000.
2018, we did, in October of 2018, it was $5,000 for Unquity House. Let's just check and see if that was supplemental. I was thinking more.
Because we did do supplemental, I thought.
Yeah, I was thinking more along the lines of $20,000, somewhere in that ballpark for them.
No, I don't think it's that much. But I'll, I'll go for that. If you want to make that motion, I'll go for it.
Yeah, I meant not what we gave in the past, but what we, what I thought we should give this year, given their, the COVID need and.
I agree.
It sounds like they're trying to keep some of these low-income seniors out of the supermarkets and have subsidized food store at Unquity House.
Katie, if you look at third page for FY18, I think, or FY19, rather, I think it says 5,000.
Yeah. It, it was pretty small, Katie. When I looked at it, was not, was nowhere near the scale of what we give to either MR Milton Residents Fund or the pantry. It's a.
In 2018, it was 5,000. All right, so maybe it was 5,000 last year, too. I, it's not jumping out at me.
Would you accept, how about 10, Katie? Would you be comfortable if we gave him 10? Give him a $5,000 cushion?
Yeah, I think we should give an increase.
I'd make a motion to increase them by $5,000 to give them $10,000 for, is it calendar 20 fiscal? What, what is the?
The FY, be fiscal.
Fiscal. FY21. So for fiscal 21.
I'll second the motion. And I think we should communicate to them that, especially while COVID is still going on,[1771.35] while COVID is still going on, and we know there could be a second wave in the fall, that they should feel free to come back to us. That's what the Governor Stotan Fund is for. I think it's, this really aligns so well with what the Governor Stotan intent is. If they find that they're in greater need, they should come back to us.
So, can I just say something? So, the, the letter that I have that's dated May 13th that I was reading from says that there was about $500 left over from last year, which we used to a certain thing of emergency items, yeah, for, for this store. But yes, but it doesn't give a request. Does it make, well, I guess we could just, I, I agree. We'll, we'll just give them that and then tell them that they can come back.
Yeah, the, 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 the request, I think, Melinda, is in the last paragraph where it says, "We would respectfully ask for funds..."
Right, but it's not...
Specific amount. You reference is the 5,000, but, but it's not specific.
Right. Okay.
But in the prior paragraph, Melinda, I think it's important that they're, they're doing something more than what they usually do. Because of COVID, you know, they're, they're taking on a greater responsibility to the residents. It sounds like they weren't really want to keep them out of, it says in here, there are some residents who are not able to get to the store and don't have any family member nearby, so...
Right, right. No, I know that they've struggled with some food insecurity among certain people, so this store is, I hope that's actually something that can keep going. Thank you.
All right, so motion's been made and seconded for $10,000. Any further discussion? All those in favor, it's a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Conlon?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Zulis, yes. Item three, update on the food pantry and residence fund. I have, I, we don't have, I don't know if we have the numbers here, or if we can get a quick update. Do we have anyone here from the food pantry that records one? I don't believe so.
Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Chair, if I might. Madam Vice Chair, do you remember, I, I know Noreen Dolam was on the call last Thursday, Lieutenant Caputo's LEPC call. Do you remember?
What she said?
Yeah. I don't recall.
Yeah, so she said that they had, she's given out 45 gifts since, since March. So that's March, April, and, and this portion of May, up until last Thursday. But she did, she didn't say that the needs had changed. She just said that she'd given out 45 gifts. And as we know, the, the needs have increased. There, there are multiple gifts being given for multiple things to, to one household. So, but that, that was it. So if you look at 45, like, the first month, it, it seems like there must be an uptick, because in, in March, I think she told us she had made something like 12 gifts or 13 gifts, and then the following month, something about the same. So it sounds as if maybe there's been a bit of an uptick, but she didn't break it down that way.
Melinda, did she indicate future needs, or whether, because we had transferred $35,000 to the Residence Fund and 10 to the food pantry. Did either one of them give any updates of any additional needs they might have?
No, not, not, not to me. So, I, I thought that, that they may have been invited to come this evening, but, but I will check in and make sure that, that there hasn't been, and remind them, as you said, Katie, that they, they should communicate with us if they feel like that something's needed. But also, I've been in touch with Reverend Lisa Ward, and she has not mentioned that the Milton Residents Fund is in immediate need. I, I, I think generally in conversations I've had with Noreen and with Reverend Lisa, we've been looking at that period that things sort of could fall off the cliff with the federal government in, you know, end of July, so...
Why don't we, why don't we see if we can have them in next week to give us an update if they're available?
Would you like me to invite them?
You or Mike, Mike, you know, Mike, probably, probably better just to make, you know, to have Mike do it.
Mike, okay.
That's okay with you, Mike? Yeah, I didn't hear you. You're on mute, but that's okay.
Yes, yeah, sorry.
Who else?
So, Mr. Chair, just, just a little far, as I mentioned earlier, I did have a conversation with Assistant Pavelcheck, Assistant Superintendent Pavelcheck for the schools, and they are doing 3,500 meals a week in town here, and that could end June 30th, because that technically would have. They, the school before, the before breakfast and lunch programs usually don't go through the summer. They are trying to get funding, and to Katie's point, that's kind of taken some of the pressure off. Even my brother's keeper today, they're doing stuff here, as is the Catholic food pantries, and there's probably others that we don't even know about. So, as Melinda and Katie have described, the need is there, and I think we're, we're being proactive here, positioning them so that they will be able to be successful.
Yeah, my understanding is that the schools are seeking a federal grant to keep that going. If they don't get it, then it may be incumbent upon us to see what we, see if that's something we need to step in on. Ms. Collins?
Now, I, the way I understand it, Steel and Rye is providing dinners to families, school, from, from the public schools. Is that, is that correct? And does anybody know how that's going?
I, I think Navara's as well. I think, I don't think it's a rotation-based thing. It's so many meals, and it's so many nights a week. That's how it was described to me.
Because I, I know, you know, we, we can donate as individuals, but I, I didn't know if, if that, how well that was going, and if, if there was going to be a need there at some point.
Ms. Collins?
I think that's something we could ask the schools about, because I think they're really administering, or administering it, for lack of a better word. I think it's coordinated with the school food services department and Jackie Morgan's group, so maybe we could find out about that from the schools and see if there's any need there. But, you know, just to follow up, you know, we, we were proactive in middle of March by transferring $10,000 to the food pantry right at the start of this crisis in Massachusetts. And I think that, we've talked about many times before, we're probably going to see a wider group of people who may not have met the initial criteria for eligibility a few months ago, but because of changed circumstances with COVID, maybe when all the federal benefits end at some point, or, or as things start falling off, there's, there probably will be a greater need from a broader group of people in town who need some support. So I, I think we've communicated to all three organizations, but if we haven't, we should reiterate it that as Governor Stotan trustees, we're more than happy to hear from them as to what their needs are at any given time, and they can come back. And we may be more generous this year and in '21 than we have been in prior years, or maybe in future years, when we have to get back to a more normal contribution schedule. But this is, you know, as somebody said, it is raining cats and dogs out there, so this is a time to make these donations.
It's some of the, oh, sorry, go ahead, Melinda.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah. I, I just wanted to follow up. Katie had reminded us at, at a housing meeting that we, we may have the ability to expand eligibility for some recipients, because Milton Residents Fund works at 300% above the federal poverty line, and yet there are people who won't be caught by that. And so if we're able to, she, she suggested that we look into making sure Milton Residents Fund knows that they can use a, a portion of money that, that we give. We could define it, or we don't have to, for, for people who fall outside of that somewhat. And Noreen is, part of her process is verifying eligibility, so she can do that for whatever parameters.
One of the things that I want to say, these cases are really unique. There was a case two weeks ago that came to me that I referred, I think Mike Denny sent everyone, but the facts of that case were, so this was a family of four, didn't know how to get to the food pantry, didn't know where it was, and the resident that was helping them was also out of work, but they had it on a deployment check, and she was trying to split her, her check between her and this family of four. So these are some pretty, these aren't your normal run-of-the-road, not, not that anyone is, but just gives you an idea of how dire some of these situations are. So, as I said before, I think we're definitely doing the right thing here.
I just, I just want to add to what Melinda said, because obviously, the food pantry and the Residence Fund have their own eligibility requirements, but we're only governed by the Governor Stotan will, which talks about the poor of Milton, and it's not really well-defined. And I think we have more discretion, at least in the past, you know, the prior, Noreen's predecessor, whose name is escaping me at the moment, she used to come in sometimes to an executive...
Diane Ferrari.
Diane Ferrari, how could I forget? Thank you, Richard. She used to come in occasionally to an executive's and bring a specific need to us, where we talked about what the requirements of a particular family or an individual might be, and that may be something that we need to remind Noreen as a possibility, that if someone has a, a genuine need that's a little bigger or a little different than what she typically sees, that maybe, maybe she could refer that to us, or she could come into an executive session and go over some of the specifics with us, and we could consider whether, using our fiduciary obligation and our discretion as Governor Stotan trustees, whether there's something that we can do that might be a little broader than what the food pantry could do, or the Residence Fund could do.
Right. Well, Katie, I, I did actually remind her at that point, when, when you, you mentioned that she should be reminded. And this, this goes along with expanded eligibility, because her mandate with most of the funds, any of the funds that come from trusts right now, the, the way they're administered is, she'll help people, our, our households to a point, but when there are multiple needs or they're larger, and it, it's not clear whether their situation is, is really something that's sustainable, then she, she, she will sometimes reject the request. And at, at this time, it, it's a discussion for the Governor Stotan trustees to have, do we think that it's more important that people stay housed at the moment? Because they're, to, to, to leave your, your house or your home and, and be evicted or have to go somewhere else is very difficult. It's very difficult to find a place to live right now. So, you know, that, that's something that we may, may want to consider, but we would have to say to her, I mean, there is somebody who we, we were talking about in particular, and she said, "Well, I'm, I, I wouldn't do X for this person that they need, because I don't know that it's a sustainable situation." Whereas I, I was wondering if, if she did come in, would we, would we talk to her? So I'll mention it again, but again, it's those parameters.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll try to have the food pantry and the Residence Fund in to give us a little bit more specifics next Wednesday, if they're available. Item four is a discussion of the trust fund revenue and expenses. We received the spreadsheet, I think it was from Jim McCollis, with the balances. And so, comments or questions or thoughts on that?
I do have a question, but it's, it's unrelated, and I just, so the, the house that was the poorhouse, the house that was moved up at the... Poor Farm.
Pest house.
The pest house. Do we have any idea how much it would require? I mean, from the outside, it looks fine. It's got new windows, it's got grass, new stairs, new foundation. I'm sure it would need some work inside. Do we have any idea how much it would cost to make this livable? And even, I mean, even if we just rented it at a, at a month-to-month, it's, it's one unit we're putting on that isn't there now. It's an affordable unit that we could put on as a rental unit now. It's just sitting there.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yeah, please.
We could, we could bring Mr. Prondak in. I, I think, I think it needs work. I think it needs an investment. I don't think it's ready, especially for wintertime. I think there's, some stuff needs to be done to the building.
Yeah.
So I would, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just thought it was a connected to water and sewer utilities like that, yeah.
But even that, we could do that, right? The town, we, it's our property. We could put a water and a sewer connection into it. The line runs right up there to the shelter. That wouldn't be that hard. And then, I'm just thinking outside the box, maybe we try to get Puho Regional in right away in the fall. They're always looking for work. Let them get a list of what it needs, and they did all the work that makes the shelter function today. It's still functioning, just, it's, it's just one more unit that we could put out there that someone might be able to rent. We have to get 50 this year in the plan. We don't have any yet. One would, one's better than zero.
So, so maybe...
Just a thought. We don't even answer that. It's just a thought. It's sitting there. I drive by it all the time, and I see it, and like, what could we do to make it function?
Katie?
But the only thing I'm thinking is, I like the idea about the Blue Hills Regional School, if there's work that they can do to help with the interior, but since we're looking at a broad view of what we can do with the remaining four acres, we wouldn't want to do anything that's going to present problems, to do some kind of a development or whatever we're going to do with that four acres. I, I think we want to think about it in the context of that as well.
That's what, I'm thinking just, you know, tenant will or transitional, something like that, where, short-term, but someone who's in dire need who could, who could, and we put some more money, you have to put the rent into the fund. Just, I say, I'm not looking for an answer now. I'm just throwing around. We have a discussion.
I don't think that would really qualify for the SHI, because, I mean, you, you'd have to have a, some kind of professional management, whether it be the town, or it be an agent or agency or something. And I, I don't think, I don't think tenant will or month-to-month would, would qualify, especially if we're, I mean, it could take five years to get, to get something done there. So, they actually could have five years, and so, so I'm not sure. Those are just questions, but, but it, I, I like the idea of using it and getting somebody in there.
The last tenant, the last tenant was a tenant of will for 27 years. It's a long time.
All right, well, I guess we'll, we'll have Mr. Prondak take a look and kind of anything else on the trust fund revenue and expenses? Item five, approval of meeting minutes. We have the minutes from the 11th, the 25th, the 30th of March, and in April, the 2nd, the 7th, and the 22nd. Are we in a position to vote on these?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of March 11th, 25th, and 30th, and April 2nd, 7th, and 22nd.
Motion's been made and seconded, and we'll, we'll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Conlon?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Yes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
One more thing, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Kevin Freitag had to jump off the call, but he did want the trustees to know that he's been trading phone calls with Assistant Attorney General Green about getting that meeting back, back.
Oh, oh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
He's trying to get in touch. They're just, they're trading phone calls, understandably.
Right, they're both very busy. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Made and seconded. This is a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Conlon?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes, so thank you for putting up with me. I thought it was a great idea to come outside, but I, I thought I'd get the dog to leave me alone, but it didn't help. Thank you for bearing with me.
Oh, no, it worked fine. It worked fine. Thank you all. We will meet again next Wednesday. Is that June 3rd?
Yeah.
Yes.
Next Wednesday, June 3rd at 5, right? Next Wednesday, June 3rd, 5:00. And thank you all, and we'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Hillary. Thanks, Hillary. Thank you, Mike Lynch.
And Mike.